Be ready. Let's see, clerk, please call, roll call.
Councilmember Story?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Bator?
Here.
Mayor Bertrand?
Here.
Rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the public that's listening, this meeting is a cablecast live on Charter Communications, Channel 8, and is being recorded to be broadcast on Wednesday at 8:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. And on Saturday, the following will be 1:00 p.m., Charter, Channel 71, Comcast 25 also. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website, citiacapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Lynn Dutton. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during this meeting, and please sign your name when you come forth to speak. I'd like to dedicate this meeting today to the memory of Barbara Gorson. We lost her to cancer this last weekend. She's a 20-year resident of Capitola and has been a tireless advocate for our libraries. She served on the Santa Cruz Public Library Joint Power Authority Board from 2004 to 2012, and she was the board chair in 2011. In addition, she represented the city on both the local and regional library advisory commissions from 2016 to 2018. In 2018, she was also honored as the Capitola Soquel Woman of the Year. Our symphony goes out to her husband, Billy, and her family. So with that, are there any presentations?
Yes, I have the very happy duty with the first to introduce our new receptionist. I'll have Vanessa Graham work her way forward. As you may recall, we promoted our other front desk person, Jackie Aluffi, and began our recruitment and had, as we often do, a very significant response to the recruitment, interviewed eight people, and from that, Vanessa was the number-one unanimous choice of the panel, and she has been with us for seven days now, still learning who gets the calls when it's a fence permit and a pothole and the people who say, "I don't know who I need to speak with," as well as jumping in to help with all of the business license renewals that come this time of year. We were all very taken by her strong background and experience in administration, as well as her warmth and commitment to being a team player. So, welcome Vanessa.
Thank you. Thank you.
I knew you were going to be here, and it was a pleasant surprise to see you with a wonderful smile. And you didn't know who I was, of course, but you dealt with it properly.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
I'm very happy to be here, very happy to be working with the public in the City of Capitola.
Yeah, we're happy to have you.
Really excited.
Welcome, Vanessa.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate having you here in Capitola.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we have something of note, an Officer of the Year Award, Herb Ross, and I believe the chief will be presenting.
That was special, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Bertrand, council members, staff, and guests, including just about the entire Capitola Police Department and many of the family members and friends of Master Officer Guillermo Vasquez. I'm here before you, very honored to be before you tonight, to recognize and introduce Master Officer Guillermo Vasquez as our 2018 Selectee, recipient of the Herb Ross, prestigious Herb Ross Award, and our Officer of the Year. And so I'd like to invite Captain Daly to be up here with me on my right, and Officer Vasquez, if you can stand on my left, while I talk a little bit about Guillermo's accomplishments. In a couple of months, I'll be celebrating my 33rd year in law enforcement, a wonderful career, and I'm being real honest in saying to you and Guillermo, specifically saying to you and your family, that I have not seen many officers who work as hard and are as passionate about their work as Master Officer Guillermo Vasquez. So it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce him as a recipient of our 2018 Officer of the Year Award. And I want to touch on a few things. Master Officer Guillermo Vasquez began his career with the Capitola Police Department in January of 2006. Throughout his 12 years of service, he has demonstrated the highest level of professionalism and dedication to the Capitola residents, our community, and his fellow employees and officers. For several consecutive years, Guillermo has led all officers in productivity and measured performance, always meeting the public's high expectations of law enforcement officers in today's challenging climate. Over the past year, as the police department struggled with significant staffing shortages, Guillermo demonstrated a selfless quality to serve above and beyond expectations. During the unexpected absence of a supervisor and due to his recognized expertise and leadership, he assumed the vacated supervisory responsibilities without the pay. Supervised responsibilities and tasks while maintaining his duties as a patrol officer. Specifically, he managed and maintained the department's entire technology and equipment program, including the body worn camera program, management of our police department fleet program, facility security program, portable radio program, our cellular telephone programs for the entire city, and all the cataloging and auditing requirements that are associated with the management of that difficult task. During this four-month period, Master Officer Vasquez's performance allowed the department to effectively serve our community by managing and maintaining the critical tools necessary to perform as peace officers. He displayed a tireless work ethic, fully supporting the needs and the vision of the police department while maintaining service levels expected and deserved by the citizens of Capitola. And so through a peer nomination and unanimous vote of supervisory and command staff personnel with the police department, Master Officer Guillermo Vasquez was selected and is tonight recognized as the 2018 recipient of the prestigious Herb Ross Award and Officer of the Year for 2018. My congratulations to Officer Vasquez. Yeah. You know what's going to happen next. Somebody's going to ask you a question, so I'm going to get out of the way.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am taken back by this. It's a lot of work, and thank you, Chief, Department Eds. Sergeant Ross was about integrity, professionalism, and hard work. Words I lived by, embedded in my head by my parents and the military when I served. I will close with part of a quote from Steve Jobs, "The only way you do great work is to love what you do." And I appreciate my family being here, my son Thomas, Caroline, my wife Myra, her parents, friends and family, my coworkers, sorry, I really appreciate you guys being here. I do this to make sure that every one of us is safe, our equipment works, and we can count on it when we need it. It's a lot of work and a lot of hours of calls, late calls, my wife knows that, so thank you. Thank you to all. Congratulations, Guillermo.
Thank you very much for your service at Capitola and stepping up when it was needed. City Council, is there a report from closed session?
Nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you very much. Are there additional materials?
Yes, we received additional materials, two public comment items for 9A, or excuse me, 10A. For item 10B, at your dais and in the back, you will see that there is a revision to the proposed draft policy. There was a sentence added to that.
Okay.
And for item 10D, we also have a public comment. It had been previously sent and was requested to be included in tonight's agenda as a comment.
Okay. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Staff has no changes. Thank you. At this point, we would like to open the dais for public comments. Are there any public comments from the, from the, from people? Yes, I see one person, okay. And please sign your name at the dais if you'd like it to be recorded.
Let's see. My name is Denise Ellerick, and I wanted to come and briefly thank the City of Capitola for adopting the Extended Producers Ordinance, which requires pharmaceutical companies to be responsible for paying for the disposal of their narcotics, drugs, medicines, as well as sharps. And part of what the community, I'm here with community, for Community Prevention Partners and the SAFERx Coalition of Santa Cruz County, and we've been collecting data about people's habits and practices and awareness around the importance of disposing of unused medicine and what they do and what they don't do, and it's been very eye-opening. And so we're about ready to release another survey on January 29th. It's a follow-up. So we're into, and I know you value data and collecting data, so what we want to continue to do is to raise awareness on the importance of removing unused medicines from the home. We still have data from our Healthy Kids surveys and from the Seven Challenges surveys, but young people report that it's still pretty easy to get medicine cabinet access and to find old Vicodin from Wisdom Teeth that have been extracted five years ago and that kind of thing. So we'll be releasing the survey in Spanish and in English, and we, what we're asking city council to do is to consider helping us spread this survey. I have some packets for all the council members.
Thank you.
And I won't go over all of the boring details, but the exciting thing is that this community, Santa Cruz County, is the model for the state because of this Extended Producer Ordinance. There's ordinances throughout the state in an assembly bill, I think it was 212. So we have 52 locations at pharmacies and kiosks where people can bring their medicine and their sharps, and you can go on medproject.com and just put in your zip code and it'll show you where to go. And I have a little data that if, I will forward it to you in an email, but you'd be interested to know that even in a small community like Capitola, per capita, Capitola had more opioids being prescribed than other parts of the community. And that's what, how that's important is we want to inform people on what to do with them when there's leftovers and they don't need them anymore. So if you could help distribute them with your email databases, on your social media pages, once this survey goes live on January 29th, that would be greatly appreciated on the Capitola's Facebook page. We're really going to try to collect a lot of data and get the information out there. The survey takes like maybe two or three minutes to fill out, it's really pretty simple, and even just the process of reading the information about the data is, it just gets people thinking like, "Where is all that and what do we do with it?" So we don't want people putting it in the toilet or putting it in the garbage, we don't want it going into our water supply, and so I think it'd be very helpful if, I'll be sending a follow-up email to you all, and in coming in March or April, we'll also come back to all the city councils with the results of the data that we collect, so.
Okay, thank you Denise.
Thank you very much.
Yes. City Manager, can we participate in helping to distribute this survey and getting some more information out?
Yeah, we'll take a look at what the information is and look at what's the appropriate venue, whether it's our social media, our website, different tools that we have available.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any more people from the aisles that would like to speak? Seeing none, closed public comment? One more. Where? Oh, I'm sorry. Did not see you get up, my fault.
Is this the appropriate time to speak on the B, library construction update?
No, that will be on the regular agenda. So again, anyone else who would like to speak to something that is not on the regular agenda, I should have made that statement earlier. Okay. Seeing none, closed public comment. Now it's city council and staff comments. Ed, you have?
I just have one thing, just wanted to add to a future agenda, I'd like to bring up an item to discuss the current rope lights that are around the palm trees in the village.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I got an email from a local community activist concerning a collaboration of local jurisdictions making an application for homeless assistance emergency program. And in order for Capitola to participate, we would need to declare a shelter crisis here in Capitola. The county has done so, the City of Watsonville has done so, the City of Santa Cruz has done so. And I would just, I think it would be worthwhile for us to consider that in order for us to be able to, one, be a county participant in that effort to combat homelessness, and also to be able to have us be eligible for the funding, to be able to, you know, provide such services in the future. Now however, I understand there is a deadline because the application is being submitted on the 24th, and which is before our next meeting. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention and see if there is any interest in maybe holding a special meeting. Also wanted to maybe ask the city manager if there is any update or interest from his perspective on being a, you know, really a county and regional player in that issue.
Mr. City Manager, is there some information to help us out on here?
I think what I can share is that the deadline to make the declaration pursuant to the information that I got from the county, just, the deadline got moved forward relatively recently, and the deadline would be the 15th. So if we were to make a disaster, sorry, a shelter crisis declaration, we would need to do so at a special meeting either next Monday or Tuesday to meet that deadline. And I guess I would add that, you know, our staff is available if council would like to schedule such a meeting, and we can meet all Brown Act requirements if necessary to put together the information necessary for the hearing.
Okay, so it's been suggested by Councilman Sam Story that this would be something you'd like to see. What's the will of the council here on this?
This is in reference to the HEAP, the HAP program, this is, I had a briefing from the city manager on this topic, and that's what this is in reference to.
Yes.
It's a one-time allocation of money. In my very limited knowledge of this, I felt like it was a fund that I would felt would be better appropriately used in different services in the county, and I didn't think that it was appropriate for Capitola entering at this time. So given the deadline, it is something we can discuss, I don't have an interest to have a special meeting, but I will, you know, definitely attend at the will of the council.
So I think for me, that to declare a homeless crisis in Capitola sounds a bit alarming.
It's a shelter crisis.
A shelter.
Yeah.
A shelter crisis. And so I've done a little bit of research on this at this time, and for me, I don't think it would be a good time to, for me, I wouldn't move forward with this to have a special meeting. There's a lot more to it, I think, about who allocates those dollars, that I'm not sure that Capitola has a seat at that table for, if that would come up. And I don't think with the short enough, with the short amount of time that we have, that there would be enough time to reflect on that. There's a really short timeline for that, and I think that we can look at different options that already exist, different resources, if we really want to think about the shelter in place or other options of how Capitola can collaborate countywide.
Well, just to clarify, you know, our city manager does have a seat at the table, he sits in those meetings.
Right. Right, but from what I understand, that there's a different subcommittee that actually would allocate those dollars.
So I'm going to, I'm going to have to do my duty here and interject.
Thank you.
The Brown Act prevents the city council from having any really substantive, meaningful discussion on the merits of unagendized topics. The conversation that you would be briefly permitted to discuss is whether to have a special meeting to further discuss the topic. I know that's a bit of a nuanced rub, but that is what is required.
Sure.
There's probably a number of community members who, if they knew this was on the agenda, may have wanted to share their information and share their opinions, so we need to provide them with the opportunity to participate as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Reed. And I'm just bringing it forth to see if there's an interest in even agendinizing this, and I realize the timing is difficult, but, you know, that's just the nature of, you know, the application process and where we are at this time, so.
Thank you, Reed.
Councilperson Christie?
I'm not sure that moving forward with a special meeting for next week is the way to go, however, I do think it's important that we continue to keep these kinds of issues on our radar as we move forward.
Okay, I don't see a motion to move forward on this, and I do feel that, actually, I'm disposed to having a meeting next week because I think we need to air the issue, so I'm actually in favor of having a meeting next week. I'm not necessarily in favor of making this an emergency statement, but as stated earlier, it might be nice for the community to have a chance to participate in this. So at this juncture, we have Sam, maybe we should have a vote whether we should proceed on this. It's not a motion, or how would we proceed on this, actually?
Well, my count of what I just heard indicates that there's not an interest in having, holding a special meeting, so I view that that makes the issue moot at this point. So I mean, I'm happy to make a motion, but I just, it didn't appear that it was going to pass, and so I didn't want to push this to that.
Okay, how many votes do we need for a special meeting to pass?
So any, any vote would require, since there's five council members here, a vote of the majority, but there is also the prerogative of the mayor to establish special meetings, so there's that sort of option invested with the discretion of the mayor as well.
So that puts me on the, on the spot here. I would like to declare a special meeting for next week.
Monday or Tuesday.
What's the best for everyone's agenda?
Monday.
Monday?
They have League of Cities. Excellent.
Right. Monday.
Monday, okay.
Generally, our special meetings are held at 6:00. Would that be the preference, or would you prefer to do the regular, a regular meeting time of 7:00?
6:00.
6:00?
6:00.
6:00, okay. So it's determined we'll have a special meeting at 6:00 on Monday for this item. So now we'll move to boards and commissions?
I have one more comment.
Oh, sorry.
Is this, there was other comments to be made? Oh, yes. Oh, where are they? Is this a time that we would talk about the proclamation?
A quick announcement, yes.
A quick announcement.
Okay, sorry.
So the City of Capitola, actually, Jacques, would you like to read this? The City of Capitola Mayor's proclamation is honoring Michael Watkins upon his retirement from the Santa Cruz County Office as Superintendent. So we will be presenting this proclamation to him, along with all three other cities in the county, tomorrow at his retirement party.
So now we move on to item 8A, boards and commissions. I think city clerk will be leading us in this discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just before we move off the topic of comments, I just have one minor announcement that I wanted to make.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
I had asked you to do this, and I just, okay, my fault.
It's quite all right. I did want to let the council and the community know that Merlon Guyer, who's the owner of the Capitola Mall, recently closed on the Sears property, which means now that they own 70% of the Capitola Mall. Staff will be sitting down with the new owners of 70% of the mall, as they indicate that they intend to move forward with a project to talk about what's going to work well for them and what's going to work well for our community. So looking forward to that in 2019, it's hopefully a real priority project for the city. In addition, I just wanted to let the community know that previously in October, we had continued an appeal of the old application for the Sears property to next meeting. As the owners of the property, no longer, old owners of the property no longer own the property, that application has been withdrawn, and that continued hearing has been canceled.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So the nature of our communication is ongoing, and do we have any meetings scheduled soon, or how's that?
We do. We have meetings with the representatives scheduled for, not next week, the week after.
Okay, thank you very much. That's great news. Okay. Now we're on to boards and commissions. City clerk, please.
Yes, we will run through a series of appointments, both for city advisory committees and commissions, as well as other jurisdiction boards and entities where we have representation. So I will begin with the city boards. The first item up is the Architectural and Site Review Committee. This is a mayor's appointment. These are professional positions based These are professional positions based on the different requirements for planning and development. Both Frank Fanton, the architect, and Carolyn Swift, our historian, have requested reappointment to their position. So if it is the mayor's desire and the council's concurrence, we can continue to have them serve in those positions.
No bills? Definitely, keep them on.
Very good. Second item is the Art and Cultural Commission. At this point, we are looking for the council member representative. One member of the city council sits on this commission, and so at this time, for many years, that was council member termini, and he has moved on. So we are looking for a new representative in that location.
Anyone on the board that would like that position? Sam?
If I may, I mean, just to let everybody know, as a planning commissioner member, I was an appointee to the Art and Cultural Commission. I'm happy to continue in that role, but I'm willing to, you know, defer if there's someone that's really interested in being on the Art and Cultural Commission.
I have no interest in that commission, so there's not somebody else?
You bet. No?
Well, I'd be happy, yeah, please.
Congratulations.
Then you'll continue in a new role.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commission on the Environment?
Yes. In this, first, we need to determine, it has one city council representative, so we will need to select a city council representative. Then the remainder of the council each picks an at-large member. Our mayor has been our representative, and so the question first is whether Mayor Bertrand would like to continue to serve on the Commission on the Environment, or if there is another member who would like to take that position.
If someone else would like it, I will cede to that, otherwise I'll stay on. To the chairs. Okay. And now we have appointments.
That means that the rest of you will get to appoint someone. Unfortunately, I only have three folks for you to choose from at this point. We are still in recruitment. Councilmember Botworf, Peter Wilk, who was your appointee, has requested reappointment. Are you interested in reappointing?
Absolutely, he's a great man.
Very good. And councilmember Peterson, Kathleen Atchison is interested in returning. Would you like to reappoint?
Absolutely.
And would either of our new members like to appoint Michelle Barretsoff-Law, who has applied?
I would.
Okay, very good. And I will continue to recruit and to the community if you are interested in preserving the natural resources of Capitola online. The applications are available. Thank you very much. Next up is Finance Advisory Committee. Similar process. First, we have two positions for the council. They are first right of refusal for the mayor and vice mayor. Mayor Bertrand, do you wish to continue to serve?
Yep.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Peterson, would you like to serve on the Finance Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay, so in that case, the remaining three have the opportunity to make appointments. Councilmember Botworf, Paul Esty has been your appointee. Are you interested in reappointing?
You can carry on, yeah, thank you.
Very good. Marilyn Warder, who was the vice mayor's appointee, is, has requested a reappointment, and we also have a new applicant, Douglas Crowder. Or any of our remaining folks want to, want to claim an applicant?
I would like to have Douglas be my appointment, and thank you for being here tonight.
I'd like to reappoint Marilyn Warder.
Well, that would need to be, because you are serving yourself, you cannot reappoint, so, but if councilmember Story would be interested in reappointing.
I'd be happy to do that.
All right, then we have a full Finance Advisory Committee. The last of the regular city boards is the Wharf Working Group. It is primarily ex officio business owners on the Wharf and two councilmembers. Councilmember Peterson has been serving on that, and then we need a second commissioner, so it's up to the vice mayor whether she wishes to continue serving. And we would also like another member to step up. This is a periodic, there's not a regular meeting schedule for this group.
I'd be happy to continue.
Okay, so we have one. Is there another member? I believe these are usually midday meetings, correct?
I'd be willing to do that if someone else is not interested.
Okay, councilmember Botworf. The other two items related to city boards and commissions do not require any action tonight, or well, one of them may. The Traffic and Parking Commission is up as a separate item under 10A. We will be discussing whether to continue with that commission. If we decide to continue with it, then we will make those appointments. And the other item is the Ad Hoc Library Design. It is an ad hoc position. There have been no resignations or changes, so unless there are any questions or changes, there's no recommended action at this point.
Has anyone talked to Mike, if he wants to continue?
He does.
Okay.
Okay, then we can move on to the boards on which we have representation. The first of those is the Capitola Public Safety Foundation. This is one representative appointed by the mayor. Currently, Vice Mayor Peterson has been serving in that position. Is that a position you would like to continue in, or, okay?
Just, I feel like I should disclose to the council that I am on the Capitola Safety Foundation as, just as a private citizen, not in any other official capacity, but, so that means there'll be two, yeah, there'll be two councilmembers on it.
I think that has occurred previously as well, so it's not unusual. Another board is the Criminal Justice Council. We have two member representatives. Currently, Mayor Bertrand has served on that, and we have an open slot. Do we have interested members for criminal justice?
I'm interested.
I'll stay on.
Okay. Should, I'm, would like to note that there's some time issue, timing issues, that I just want to point that if, at the end, it might be just for this remainder of the year, we might have to bring that up again.
I believe it is quarterly. I think I just got theirs. I think the first meeting is in March, but I could be confusing it with one other.
Yeah.
But I will get you that schedule, and we will confirm that it works with you. This next item is one that rotates among the cities. It is the Local Agency Formation Commission. The position that is coming up would start in May. It is an alternate, but I am told that alternates do usually attend these meetings, and again, they're, I think, every other month. This is a nomination by the city, and then it goes to the County Select Committee, but the standard rotation has been that this would be Capitola's term, and it is a four-year term, May 2019 through '22.
To be clear, it's an alternate for the first two years, and then the next two years, it's the primary.
I believe it is a four-year alternate, but I am...
Councilmember Botworf, I know you've served this previously. Wasn't it two, my recollection was it was two and two.
Double check, it's in the packet. There is a description in the packet.
I did serve two and two, but I can't remember if I came in halfway through the rotation, so I don't know what the, what the actual, I couldn't verify the term. I did, was an alternate for two years, and then became a full member, and I don't know when Santa Cruz would rotate out.
Double check me, it is in the packet, if someone can pull up the, the letter from Pat McCormick.
According to the agenda packet, it's actually three years, from 2019.
Oh, yes, 19 to '22. My math is off.
To 2022, so.
We'll split the difference.
So you guys, in between the two of you, so.
All right. On average, we were right.
I had the dates right, at least. So we are looking for an alternate, but as I said, their recommendation is that an alternate, even when the representative is there, they do like the alternates to stay up to speed on the issues, so they do like the alternate to attend. Do we have any members that are interested in?
I would recommend it, but I'm not going to be around that long, so I'm not going to volunteer. But I mean, if, if, if no one's willing to do it, I would definitely fill in, you know, that alternate spot, but it's a good opportunity. I found it to be a worthwhile committee. But if you guys are busy and can't make that commitment, then I, you know, I'd be willing to fill in as the alternate, and maybe when I leave in two years, someone might be, go right to, right to the front line.
I'm, I'm interested in being the alternate.
Good, good.
The next is Santa Cruz County Children's Network. We have a council member currently representing us, that is councilman, or Mayor Bertrand. It is not required that this be a council position, so he could continue, someone else could continue, or we could extend our recruitment to the community. So this is one that does not absolutely require an elected official to take this spot.
I'd be willing to give it to someone else on the board that would like it.
I would love to take that one, thank you.
Next is the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Zone 5. This is the Stormwater. It is a subset meets with the County Board of Supervisors. This has, again, a council member representative and a council member alternate. In this case, I believe the alternate is truly an alternate, and does not have to attend every meeting.
I'll be glad to do that if no one else wants it.
Move up from alternate into the representative position.
Yeah, I'm the alternate now, right? That's Zone 5, basically.
Yes.
I'll be alternate.
Yeah, we need an alternate.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. And then we have the Santa Cruz County Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force, another one allied with the county. We have one council member representative and one alternate. This, they prefer that the representative be a council member, the alternate can be a staff member if there is not sufficient bandwidth.
So on here, I'm the, the alternate, I mean, excuse me, I am the representative, and I thought Larry was on it, so I'm uncertain what the status is right now in terms of your report.
Yes, the, the report that we have from them is their preference is council member as a representative, and alternate, often alternates apparently attend at our staff members for this particular group, but it is...
Are you going to continue?
Yeah, I'll be glad to continue.
Continue it?
Yeah.
Do we have anyone who is interested in serving as alternate, or would we like to have a staff alternate?
Can we see if our current staff alternate is interested in continuing as a staff alternate?
Of course we can.
Yes, we're getting in the lobby in the back.
Let me put it this way, Larry was great at the beauty itself. He got me volunteered, so there you go.
Turnabout's fair play.
Yeah, it's a fair play, yes.
Our, our next position is the Santa Cruz County Library Advisory Commission. This is for the final portion of Barbara Gorson's term, which ends in March, and then for the upcoming four-year term. We do have an applicant, Bob White, who has been a member of our Library Advisory Ad Hoc Design Group and has applied for this position, so this would be a, if council concurs to appoint Mr. White for this position.
He seems emily qualified. I have to admit, we'd be lucky to have him.
Do we need, do we need to make a motion?
We can do it by concurrence, so.
I think we all concur. I saw everybody's head nodding.
Good, okay.
I saw nods.
Great.
Another library item, this is the Santa Cruz County Library Financing Authority. This one is council representatives, again, a representative and an alternate. This, I believe, only meets twice a year, once early February, and then again in summer.
The meetings take usually under a minute.
Yep. So you're absolutely right. You, you walk in and just about don't sit down. Okay, I'll be glad to do that. As a representative, we do need an alternate, though, because if you're not there and there's not a quorum, it's, it's heck on the finances. So we do need an alternate.
Is there an alternate available?
No one else is jumping up at this opportunity, I'll be the alternate.
I don't think they want me on the Library Financing.
Okay, thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. Next one up is the Santa Cruz Regional Transportation Commission, RTC. This is a representative, actually, to my surprise, does not have to be an elected official, but we've always wanted an elected official on it. And it, currently, the mayor is our representative. It does not have any term limits, and it is at the council's discretion whether to consider another representative or to continue with the current representative and alternate. We have currently, the Mayor Bertrand has been the representative, and Vice Mayor Peterson has been the alternate, so this is, if there is interest in changing, or if you wish to continue with the current representation.
So I'm interested in staying on the position, and...
I'll volunteer to be the alternate.
There you go.
Okay, Sam?
And that is all of the formal items that we have. I believe that there is some interest in, in discussing casual areas where members have been served as liaisons.
I'll go ahead and bring this up, just to introduce it. There's a couple informal committees that exist that aren't on this list, but I just felt it would be good to under-bring them up, since, one is there's a representative to the BIA, and the other one is there's an informal group called the Breakfast Club that two people would eat.
Yes.
Sam, when you were last time with the, with the school board.
Yeah.
And I don't know who, I think, I know that right now, I'm the BIA representative because of some added duties with the RTC and the Metro. I informed them that I wouldn't be able to attend the meetings anymore, and they were, it's not required that a councilperson be there, it's really at their choice to have a liaison, and that's more of what it was, was a liaison. And I told them I'd come back to the council and just advise everybody that they are going to discuss whether they want to have a representative, and if they decide that they do, they would reach out to one of the council members.
I think you've done a great job, but you do not feel you, you have the time to continue, is that it?
Yeah, I, my duties for this year are going to be expanded, so I just, I move on. So I just told them that they, if they had an interest, they could reach out to one of you, and they were kind of ambivalent, like they may not even have an interest, so I left it up to them. It's not a formal committee, I conferred with the city manager, and the other one was the Breakfast Club, and I don't even know who currently is doing that, or...
Me.
Has that been ongoing, or has that kind of subsided?
Yeah, Mike and myself, pretty much.
Mike and yourself, so...
With the superintendent?
No, we don't, that's been discussed.
Two members of the school board.
A school board.
Two members of the school board and two members of the city council, just to foster harmonious relations.
Right, yeah. There's some discussion to start including the superintendents and the city managers, so that hasn't been finalized, and so the last meeting, we sort of got it to that point. So that's sort of informal. You're right. There's one that's not on here, and that's the...
I'll just, I'll volunteer to do the school board meeting. I did that before.
Absolutely, Sam, you and I were partners. You still want, you still want to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then that's, that's two.
That's good, yeah. Another one that's not mentioned is the Advisory Board for the Senior Triple-A. So Stephanie did that.
That is, that term is, they were appointed, and their, their terms are in process. We, we have both a, a member and an alternate for two more years.
Well, no, she's dropping off completely.
She doesn't, it does not have to be an elected, so when, when she was appointed, she knew she was leaving, and told me at the time that it was her intention to continue as our representative, even though she was leaving the council, so if she, if that is not her intent, I would need a...
Yeah, I think her intent is deleted because we just talked about it. Okay, so I'll ask her to...
So she will need to send me a letter of resignation, but we do have an alternate.
Actually, I'd like to step in her position, as a matter of fact, but anyway, okay. So with that, I think everything's been covered.
We have, we are done.
Okay.
Formal and informal.
Okay, good.
Just doing the BIA?
They're going to reach out to some...
They're going to reach out. It's going to be their selection.
That's their selection, okay. So anything more from the board here?
And thank you, community members who have reached out to help us with the many fabulous and interesting meetings that we have.
So at this time, we get to the consent calendar, and are there any items on the consent calendar that the board would like to pull? Or have further questions from staff? Seeing none, is there anyone from the audience that would like to pull an item for discussion from the consent calendar? Seeing none?
Move to consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on. General Government and Public Hearings, consider resolution for dissolution of the traffic and parking... Traffic and Parking Commission. Is there a report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As the title says, the item before you was requested be on the agenda from Councilman Batorf, and it is a resolution dissolving the existing Traffic and Parking Commission. I have a very short presentation for you here. Over the years, there's been several advisory committees that have advised the council on traffic issues and/or village issues in my 17-year tenure here. These four have been in place, the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee, the Village Master Plan Advisory Committee, the Blue Ribbon Parking Committee, and now the Traffic and Parking Commission. Each of these committees was formed to address a pressing issue, something that the council wanted community input on at that time. Several of them continued on after that, some were to the Traffic and Parking Commission, but eventually, the committee was, these committees were dissolved as they got farther away from what their initial goals were. For the Traffic and Parking Commission, it was formed in 2009. It was formed to expand parking in the village, which they've completed with the construction and opening of the lower parking lot behind City Hall here. They were also charged with trying to transition away from the single space meters and all the meter poles that were involved in that, and we have successfully transitioned now to pay stations throughout the village and both parking lots behind us. Since addressing this issues, the commission has developed an employee permit parking program, which is currently operating. It's a one where any village employee can go online. We give them a code, once they come and ask for it, they can buy a monthly permit in the lower parking lot. It's been in place since, I think it was August of last summer. Right now, I haven't looked in the last couple weeks, but there's probably nine or 10 employees that take advantage of it at this time. They also worked on traffic calming projects, most notably the Jewel Box Traffic Calming Projects. As I've mentioned in the staff report, I think that was a tough, tough assignment for them without having the ability to actually enact changes, and I also think it was misleading to the Topaz residents who thought they'd get approval from the Traffic and Parking Commission, they're all set. So although they've worked on those, I'm not sure that the commission of this sort is the right venue. If you look at the Hill Street Traffic Calming Project, which we did, we had citizens come to us, the council member, staff held workshops that was attended by the community members, and then we came back to the council and had that, and that was a much more productive and efficient method for dealing with those types of issues. And they also advised on three-hour parking in the village. Interestingly enough, they advised against it, and the council voted for it, and it just stuck, and it's been a good thing, and I would say most of the commissioners have now agreed that it was a good thing that we changed to three-hour parking in the village. Just looking at their meeting schedule, originally, when we were working on the village parking and the pay station issues, we were meeting twice a month, and quickly, once we got through those recommendations, we went to a monthly meeting, and we've continually backed off that, and right now, we're meeting four times a year. So, staff's recommendation at this point would to be approve a resolution, taking the necessary actions to dissolve the Traffic and Parking Commission, and that's my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
If I may.
Yes.
Steve, is there currently a meeting scheduled coming up for the next quarter or this quarter?
There is a meeting scheduled for January 23rd.
Oh, okay.
Ed? Yvette?
I have none.
Okay, Chris?
Is it just questions?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. So, what do you think of the, yeah, this might get into something else, sorry. So, no more conceptual questions, how about comments from the public? Yes, please come to the dais. Come to the dais, yeah.
Is it possible to make a comment on something that you went through before?
No, we've passed that item, I'm sorry. Whatever item it was. So we're right now considering the...
The BIA.
Yeah, that was, if you, if you have an issue with the BIA and you want to be the representative, I'd reach out to the BIA at this point, it's up to them. So right now, we're considering questions about the Parking and Traffic Committee. Any members of the public? Okay, I don't see any, bring it back to the board. What's the public's, what is the board's wish on this?
Well, I brought this up, and the reason I did, I mean, when I started my political career here in Capitola, was on the Parking Commission, so it's near and dear to me, but it's, then we were seriously considering the prospects of a village hotel, we had the parking lot, there was all the issues that Steve brought up, and there was, like you said, I don't remember it being twice a month, but if that was the case, it was. We met quite a bit, there was good attendance, and the meeting was, the commission was productive, I thought. But there comes a point, as you can see with all those committees, where, you know, the productivity stops, and I think that it was really a stretch to push the Parking Commission into the Jewel Box traffic dilemma. So at this point, we had talked last couple years about possibly dissolving the commission, I think this is a good time to do it. I totally want to reserve the ability to reenact or restart that commission should a village hotel come, you know, come before us, or any significant village change in parking design, could be a mercantile rebuild, or anything that would seriously affect the village, that input from village business and from residents in the village, I think, is essential. But at this point, I'm going to make a motion to support staff recommendation and dissolve the Parking and Traffic Commission.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Yvette?
I have nothing.
Okay. Oh, Sam?
Well, I'm just going to speak out and say that I won't be supporting that motion, and one mainly as a bit of process, because I understand that the actually Parking and Traffic Commission has not discussed this issue and come forth with their own recommendation about what they want to do. I also can see from the agenda packet that we have six residents who are interested in reappointment to that commission, so it seems to me that there is ongoing interest on that issue. I don't know that we've solved that issue, and to disband it, I think would make it very difficult to reengage. So for those reasons, I think it may be a little premature to disband that commission at this time without hearing from them, and also, now, I do recognize, and I've heard that there's maybe a sense of not adequate direction for them and focus, and maybe we need to work on that, but I would at least like to hear from the commission on this question before taking action to disband a citizen body.
Any other comments?
I'd talk.
Okay, great.
We received some emails from some of the commissioners indicating their feelings about this. I understand that we haven't heard from all of them. I am interested in dissolving the commission, but I would like to potentially throw out that we have the opportunity to also create it as an ad hoc committee, correct, if needed, for specific parking and traffic issues. So I would just suggest that in the future, when we do have traffic and parking issues come to us, that we can reform that commission as an ad hoc committee with consideration of those six applicants that were most, that were interested first and foremost before putting out for any other opportunities for anyone else to participate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one more clarification.
Yes.
Just for clarification, on the six applications, two of those were from village merchants that were just applying to fill the business spot on the position, which one business owner had, so they weren't really residents. And I think that, you know, a substantial amount of the people that have been on the committee for a long time, the chair, and Nels Westman, a longstanding person on that commission, didn't, failed to submit applications to renew, and then even my representative felt that there was not a real purpose or a reason to be fulfilling there, so, you know, I don't bring that recommendation before slightly, and I do support what Councilperson Peterson said about, we can bring this back at any time.
Okay. When I first got elected last time, one of the things I brought forth to this body was that we need to look at the Parking and Traffic Committee and have it take on a role for the whole city. And when you look at the makeup of it right now, it's pretty much focused on the Espinada and here, the central to Capitola, and that's good. And I think I agree with Ed that it served its purpose well, and the report that Steve put out has listed a lot of their accomplishments, but they've all been pretty much focused on the center part of the city, some exceptions. I also agree with Ed, I'd like to have us think about what a future committee would be when that time comes up. I also agree with Sam, I would like to have one more chance for the committee to weigh in on this, as I did the first time I was here, when I asked them if they would take on the whole city as part of their purview, but with the idea that they would reform in a different way. So I would kind of like to have that and be against this particular motion right now, and wait off until the next meeting when we get some feedback from the committee itself. So with that, let's have a...
We have a commission?
Yes.
We have two resignations, and all their terms have expired. I'm just wondering if we have a commission right now to...
Ah.
Technically no.
Technically no. Well, puts this in a bind.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend calling the question, and then if there's not, if the motion doesn't pass, then you can talk about appointments to the committee.
Okay. Call a question? Please, city court.
Councilmember Story?
No.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Batorf?
Aye.
Mayor Bertrand?
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
Okay. So, moving on to item B, Consider the Library Construction Update and Contract Change Order Policy. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. Let me just switch this over here. So this is a quick update, as construction is beginning on the Capitola Branch Library. Work began in earnest, probably over the holidays here. Recently completed work has included the contractor mobilizing and getting his job trailer set up on site. They did complete some tree trimming and the required tree removal for the new library site. They have surveyed the site, which establishes the controls to make sure the building gets put in the right location and at the right elevation. They've done some required utility locating to make sure we know where all our tie-ins are for sewer water, stormwater, and all that, and they have begun and done select vegetation removal, clearing and grubbing on the site. Upcoming work in the near future, probably the biggest thing we're waiting for is to disconnect and remove the old electrical service, storm drain installation, they're going to do some advanced storm drain work in there to control site runoff, since we're doing this in the middle, starting in the middle of winter, and they will then begin rough grading for the foundation. So, I think everybody's aware, if not, we have a webcam, it shows updated, I think it's every 30 minutes, a new picture of the site. This picture was actually taken yesterday. The website's up there in red, it's very long and kind of difficult, but people can find a link to it on our city website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Just look for library webcam. You can also Google Capitola Library Webcam and get to this webpage. So you can see, here's the site, this is the location of the old library, was right in here. This is the electrical panel that is actually still powered and electrified, that PG&E needs to come in and disconnect. It's right in the middle of the site where the library, so getting this disconnected has once again proven difficult to have PG&E cooperate, and we're all trying. They've recently been pulled off because of the storm events, so we will continue to work on that. You can see, they've done the tree removal that was required along Wharf Road, they've put the tree protection in where they're around the top lot, contractor's trailer back here. So that's what the site basically looks like today. Because this is a newly council, I kind of wanted to go back and just make sure we all understand where the funding for this project is coming from. There's $2.6 million from the former RDA, it was an agreement that was made between the county and the city when the Rissman property was put into the redevelopment agency to set aside $2.6 million for a future library, so that is in this project. Measure S has contributed $10 million to the project, it was originally $8 million, but it was increased to $10 million when they both looked at the financing of Measure S and the escalating costs for the library, not only our library, but all the new libraries that are being constructed under Measure S. There's $1.55 million in general fund money there. Fundraising estimate is $600,000, I think that's going to be easily met and exceeded. Miscellaneous revenues, and that has to do with some, a variety of funding debt obligations that the city has retired, and residual money from that and other sources, bringing total to $15.1 million for our budget. Looking at the construction contract, the original contract, the low bid was $12,325,000, and contract was awarded at that amount on, back in July. It was awarded with a caveat that we were able to reduce those costs down to $11.5 million. We have been working since that award with the contractor, the architect, the engineers, contractor subs to identify and actually put in place changes to the contract and the project to reduce those costs. As of today, we have a, we have issued Contract Change Order 1, the contractor has verbally agreed, it's just, I think, waiting for the right person to sign it in their office, that is going to reduce the contract by $566,193. So right there, that will reduce the revised contract down to $11,758,000. We have general agreement, and we're kind of just waiting for, the process for making these official changes is, we come up with the idea, everybody agrees, everybody kind of looks at it, the architect actually goes in and makes, changes the plans, and then we submit those to the contractor, who then submits them to his subs to get the prices back. That's why it's been taking so long, is it's not an easy and short process. So there's another $275,000 that there's general agreement on, I think, we're definitely going to get there, it's just a timing at this point. So if, and when that gets through, we will have a contract worth $11,483,496. Our target, when the contract was awarded originally in July, was $11,533,000, and you can see we're ahead of it, and that leaves a contingency of $967,000 in the project. So there's more than just the construction in the budget, and so this is the full budget for the project, as you can see, $11.5 million for construction. The design engineering is $1.4 million, the permits are currently at $140,000. Project management, we have a, you know, hired project manager for the project is Miscellaneous, so miscellaneous is like the webcam, paying for that out of the project, some of the review fees we've had for permitting, very, nothing more than probably $5,000 in there, but those items add up. Furniture, fixtures and equipment, furniture here is $700,000, that's, as was in the original budget, and we've maintained that amount. We are actually, the Library Design Committee is going to meet in February to start discussing the furniture. We have a year to get it kind of figured out. I know the library district has been working on furniture recommendations, and that's what we're going to hear from the architect in February, and then, once again, the same contingency of $967,000 as we go forward. So one of the issues as we move forward is, I'm sure most of the council is aware, very rarely do we complete a project, especially one of this value, where we won't have some kind of change orders, and there's something comes up that wasn't anticipated, something, plans weren't exactly accurate, or, you know, things change, and we'll need to make changes to the contract. Some plus, most are plus, sometimes we get some minuses in there. Our current change order policy for the city allows the city manager to issue and approve contract change orders without coming to council of up to 10% of the contract amount. For our typical 200, $500,000 projects, that seems fair and adequate, and that allows us to kind of keep projects moving pretty quickly. And that allows us to kind of keep projects moving pretty quickly, so we don't have to wait for the, you know, agendize it for a council meeting. But in this case, that $11 million contract would give the city manager $1.1 million of authority, which staff felt was a little too high, more than we wanted to. We wanted to make sure that the council and the public are able to track the expenses and be as, or open as we can about that. So we are recommending that a new change order policy be issued just for this project and only for this project. And looking at that policy, so we're kind of taking advantage and developing two level, three levels of change orders that would occur. First is a field order, and that would be the project manager and myself, the Public Works Director, could issue changes of up to $20,000. It's really identified as they run into something they need, without stopping work, they would need to keep working. We're able to identify and keep the project rolling that way. The city manager would be authorized to issue up to $50,000. And then, of course, the next one would be a city council change order, which is your limit up to there. What we're recommending is that the field orders and city manager change orders will be reported to the city council every $100,000, or bimonthly, we'll come every year of the month, give you an update where we are on the cost. If we get to $100,000 before that, monthly update will come to the council then. And the city manager and I, in discussing this today, we realized that doesn't provide necessarily caps. I mean, as it was written in the agenda packet, city manager could issue 10, $50,000 change orders without a cap. So we have added the line into the policy, which was underlined, which is in the handout you have, and it's also underlined in the presentation here, where cumulative change orders cannot exceed $125,000 without council approval. So together, the city manager and public works can issue change orders in those limits of $20,000, $50,000. But once we hit 125, we can't do that anymore, and we'll have to come back to council at that point. So that's that. So our recommendation is that you approve the resolution approving the proposed field order and contract change order policy as revised for the Capitola Branch Library project.
Thank you. We have any questions? Any questions? Yes, any questions from staff, from, of staff, excuse me? Ed, Sam, Kristen, you bet?
I have a question about something you said earlier. So it's just about this, and I'm sure you've discussed it before, but the library design committee about furniture and stuff like that, I just wanted to bring something up about ADA and accommodating people with special needs and special disabilities. And I'm just wondering when a good time would be to, you know, is council members invited to that, or to that meeting, or when would be a good time just to, I know you want all of us there.
There's currently no council members on there, so there's no Brown Act problems with somebody coming in. I think that would be fine for somebody to attend.
Or could I just email my suggestions or ideas, or?
Whatever you would like to do, I think would be fine. So for, just to address ADA, certainly the design of the building has met all the current ADA standards.
Absolutely.
Furniture and all that, we're relying on library staff to assist us with that, but we'd be happy to look at it. If you have any suggestions, we'd love it.
Yeah, Live Oak Library has recently purchased items in addition to their regular ADA items that I've been working with them on. And so I would love to see that also at the, at our library.
So February 20, I'll have to get to you with the date, maybe February 13th.
Okay.
I'll get to you with the date. If you can't make it, just send us an email, and I'd be happy to bring it up.
13th?
February 13th. Thank you.
Kristen?
No questions.
Sam?
No.
I have a question. So not familiar with how the whole process works. I can understand how things come up, and you need to decide right then and there because of time constraints and moving the project along. But normally, when we award a contract, we go out for bidding and such. So how is it decided that this is a reasonable amount for the change order?
So it's a negotiation between the city as a contract administrator and the contractor.
Okay.
We, there's several ways you can do a change order. You determine that it's certainly, first, you agree that it's a change to the contract.
Right.
It's extra work that wasn't identified. It's not a bid item. It wasn't identified in the plans. Several ways it could be identified. We can direct the contractor to go on time and materials.
Okay.
And so he, you know, starts counting all his equipment that's used for that, addressing that issue, and you pay him on a time and materials. If it's just, let's say they're, the sewer, you're building a pipeline, and the design is 100 feet short, you agree to pay that additional contract price that's in there in the bid item. Or it's just something that was completely unanticipated, and, but it's quite large, you'd probably go back to the contractor, have him give you a price and negotiate that price.
Okay. So it sounds like you have tried and true methods, depending on the situation to deal with this.
Yes. Like I said, there's practically change orders on every project.
Yeah. That's why, I just want to get an idea how that works. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, maybe? Yes, Sam.
I'm sorry, but actually, a question did occur to me, and Steve, I notice under the new policy, it's, you're bringing it back to the council of cumulative orders or a single one exceeded $100,000. Is that whether it increases or decreases? And, because I noticed there was one change order already for half a million dollars. Would that be subject to this policy?
Good point, good point. So when the council awarded the original construction contract of $12.235, whatever, $325,000, they gave the city manager authority to sign a series of change orders to reduce the contract amount. So that was part of the original award.
So we have a new base?
Right, right.
That we're starting from.
So we have authority to issue those change orders already. Typically, those would need to come back. And I kind of see us only coming back if we're increasing the price.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I mean, because, I don't know if you need to...
Deductions are a lot easier to process.
Right, right. Okay, just, and maybe we can reflect that in the resolution, that it only involves increases to the budget?
Yep.
And not decreases.
I think we can add that in there.
Okay. That's a good logical point.
The other note I would add is, is we are proposing bimonthly updates with the council, just even if we don't have more than $100,000 worth of change orders, just to keep, this is such a significant project for the city, to make sure everybody remains in the loop.
Any more questions of staff? This time, I'd like to open up to the public. Any questions from the public?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mark Kane, and my wife and I are residents here in Capitola. And these numbers, I've, the first time I've seen them. But I don't believe in giving the city manager more leeway to approve increased construction cost change orders is responsible. And I'm not questioning any of your integrity, but what I haven't heard is the hard number. How much is this going to cost? Because I think the answer isn't to make it easier to write checks out of our general fund, which I think is irresponsible. But how about keeping the library project on budget? And what is that number? So how does this happen? Well, keep the project on budget, and to do this, we need a budget number. Or B, scale back the project to be within that budget number. Or C, stop the project until a later date. These change orders, it's a dirty word. The private sector doesn't get to do these things. In fact, private sector builders are canceling projects today because of high costs. And we already have the land, so the land value we already have in this project. So we started off at, what, eight? Now we're at 15.1. And, but we have money from this design change and this fundraising and this and that. So I, on the issue of just giving the city manager approval to make these changes, to fund these changes, I don't think is right. I mean, it's a brand-new building. It's all figured out. There's, you're not doing anything new here, not recreating anything. If they can't do this without making changes, then it's the wrong person. I mean, I'd love to be a contractor and be able to make changes. I mean, that's how they make a lot of their money. Anyway, the other thing that disturbed the heck out of me was the vote on the homeless thing. And I understood the lawyer to say that we'd have a public comment before that, or...
That was, we're not on that subject right now, but to answer your question...
You just kind of threw it in there and just backed off of it. I don't think that's right.
To answer your question, we were agendizing a future meeting, so it wasn't something that we're going to talk about. Now, we're going to talk about it at a future meeting.
When does the public get to talk about it?
The future meeting will be Monday.
So anybody, anybody from the public has until Monday to come here and have their say on it?
Yes, sir.
I think that is just friggin' wrong.
Okay, well, thanks for your comments and the comment...
No, 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 you're out of line here.
Okay. I understand your frustration, but...
You don't understand my frustration. I'm born and raised in San Francisco, and the homeless problem is, everybody knows what it is there. And here we're gonna, what is the thing? I don't get it. It's a sore, sore subject for me.
Okay, sir, I'd like you to come back Monday, please.
But it's a private meeting, isn't it?
No, it's open to the public.
But so I get my buddies together between now and then?
The meeting is open to the public.
And affects the whole city, right?
Thank you very much. Yes, it does. Okay, so we've had public comments. Bring it back to the city council for its direction? Ed?
Yeah, I'll start in. Mr. Kane, I was going to address your points real quick on the library. And I just want to acknowledge that I've kind of been a little hawk on the money for this library from the start to finish. So I'm sensitive to how much we're spending. And I think the important thing to note is that the library was extremely over budget, and that problem was resolved with the county funding an additional $2 million, which made us in a position where we didn't have to redesign the library, and we didn't have to come up with any additional Capitola money. The money was all funded from another source, the county, through Measure S. So at this point, you know, I'm pretty confident that the library is going to be, as you stated, on budget, on task, and it should stay on. But what there is in there is, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, there's a $975,000 contingency fund in there. And every project has a contingency fund to allow for overruns, should they happen. Should they start digging the footing and find an underground gas tank, or anything else that could happen that's not predicted, or something else that comes up where an improvement is suggested to be made that benefits or behooves the city. So that $975,000 is there, and what happens is, rather than us to have a special meeting all the time to approve $20,000 or $50,000, we're giving some leeway to the Public Works Director to make a decision, or the city manager. And I just recently took a position with the RTC, and was told today that the RTC's contingency fund is allowed $20,000 for every occurrence, and the chair can authorize $50,000, which would be similar to the numbers that we're drawing up here. So I believe the numbers are consistent with a moderate amount of leeway for what the manager of the city would be expected to do. And I think the main thing I'm concerned about is, is they took the time to put the language in there that says that if these numbers do exceed $100,000 at any given time, council will become aware of it, because I'm with you. I don't want this $100,000 to become $600,000, and then all of a sudden, our $975,000, $967,000 is gone. So I appreciate your comments, and I can assure you that I will be keeping track of every dime that's spent on the library. Thank you. And with that, I...
Accept the report.
With, I accept this recommendation of staff, and I make a motion that, approve staff recommendations.
Any second on this?
Well, just to further clarify, and I'll second the motion. What we're being asked to do is to limit the city manager's discretion from where our policy currently stands. It provides for a much greater latitude, and so I think this is moving toward more oversight and more responsibility on the part of the city council. And for that, I support the recommendation.
Okay. Any other comments? I have no comments.
Before roll call, can we, as Councilman Story recommended, can we add cumulative change orders that add an additional $1,000 to the project increase? So that we're not coming for a deduction?
Okay, so I'd agree with you.
That's fine, that's fine. Friendly amendment, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
So is that this is in the underscored, just to add the word $125,000 increase?
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, can you call roll call vote, please?
Well, just if I may...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was somebody in the audience that had their hand up.
I'd like before the meeting's over to just address the council just generally for a few minutes, that's all. Is that possible before you just... I took the time to come here...
I got a feeling he missed public comment, and maybe you could allow him leeway.
Yeah, I, I...
That's up to the discretion of the mayor, but maybe we should vote, and then you can make that decision.
Yeah, let's vote, yeah. Let's get a general comment from you. But let's vote on this. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Bator?
Aye.
Mayor Bertrand?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So at this point, because someone did come here to make a special comment, and they didn't do that earlier, let's have an exception, and have you come up, please.
Timer. Linda, timer.
I'm missing my treasure.
So you'll have three minutes to speak, sir.
Okay, my watch is on.
Well, there's a timer that's going to be sent.
Oh, there it is. There we go.
We have the fancy version.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Jamie McVicker, and I'm an outsider and a bit of an insider, and then this has become a new home for me. I'm from Washington, DC. And for many, many years, I was the president of an award-winning communications firm, and we represented economic development departments, including Arlington, Fairfax, et cetera. And I've had a lot of, lot of other involvement, somewhat at investigative level, with municipal departments as well. So that's kind of just a general background. I have been here for the last three winters, and one of the things that you mentioned was the BIA, and you're very highly thought of and appreciated for coming to those meetings. You have not met me there. I've had the ability, though, as an outsider, to take a look at the village and the business conditions in the village and get to know quite a few of the residents. And the reason I'm addressing you is there's a problem in Houston. And I want, and I sort of want to raise this so that you understand as you're approaching your function that there are some serious issues to address. You may not be aware of it, but currently, right now, there are 16 vacant buildings in the village looking for tenants. That's a rather alarming number, considering the number of buildings there are. One of the reasons, Ed, that I think there was a little bit of ambivalence about a council member approaching, is I can honestly tell you that the relationship between the business people in the village and the town right now, on a 1 to 10 scale, would be about a 1 and 1/2 or 2. But I would urge, and I think Sam's story, because I read some of the comments you made, I'd really urge you to get involved. They represent the village. It's an extremely important part of California. The issues we're dealing with are very, very complicated. As you pointed out in an early article, the retail landscape has changed. Some of the policies that you had put together years ago may have worked then. I don't think that they're working now. These people struggle try living without six months of paychecks a year, because that's what they do. It's not just a matter of events. Right now, when a building comes up randomly, they hire a commercial broker. That guy goes out, tries to find anyone that's willing to pay the rent, and then randomly, it flows from there. When I worked with economic development departments, there was, we worked together with the government. When a building came up, we met with those brokers. We helped them find the kind of people that would be a blend and a mix to draw for everyone. Believe it or not, the village is also looking dog-eared, and there's a lot of problems with the consumer experience, from parking to some of the things. So anyway, what I'm urging is that maybe Sam's story, because I read what you wrote, and I agreed with what you had to say, do become involved with the BIA. There's a lot of issues ahead of you guys for the next few years if you want the village core to continue to be prosperous. Wow.
Those are great comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate those.
Would you leave your contact information, please?
And just to let me say, and if the BIA should reach out to me, I'm happy to work with them.
Okay, moving along. So we're now on consider changes to the treasurer references in the municipal court. Discuss and implement a voter-approved transition from an elected to an approved appointed treasurer, and provide direction regarding how the treasurer appointment will be made. Is there a report?
There is. As you will recall, in November, we got a definitive yes from Capitola voters in support of making the treasurer an appointed position as opposed to an elected position. The immediate action taken to do that was simply removing the word "elected" from our municipal code, so that when we talk about our treasurer, we just simply refer to a treasurer. However, we need a process... However, we need a process, and the need for that was expedited by the fact that our treasurer resigned to take a position on the planning commission. And another reason that we need a treasurer is it is required by the state code. The state code lists several duties, among those are the collection of fees and taxes, accounting and auditing of bonds, and providing monthly accounting reports to the council. So these are duties that the state has assigned to a treasurer, and which we need a treasurer in order to carry out. In Capitol's municipal code, we identified several other areas where the treasurer is referenced, that the council may wish to look at and make amendments to, depending on what decision they make as far as how this appointed position will be processed. The first one is within Chapter 2.04, this talks about the creation of the treasurer position. Staff is suggesting that we acknowledge that it is an appointed position within this. Depending on your direction, the language would be, shall be appointed by either the City Council or the City Manager. So that is one section that staff has identified, and is looking for direction. The second is the code section defining the duties of the Finance Director, and Section D lists how that position interacts with the treasurer's position. Two parts to this, one is we realize that the code still references the redevelopment agency treasurer, and we don't have a redevelopment agency or redevelopment agency treasurer any longer, so we are recommending that all references to that be stricken. And then we are also offering some options as to how that relationship is described. Much of it remains the same. One option is adding that the Director of Finance may also serve as a city treasurer, if that is an option that you wish to add. This is a place that staff has identified that might be a logical place to add that And further down in Chapter 2, this is for the City Manager, and this addresses the positions that the City Manager may appoint, and currently, the only exceptions are the City Attorney and the City Treasurer. Should you decide that you wish to give the option of appointing the City Treasurer, as you did back when the City Clerk was made an appointed position, the City Clerk used to be on this list, it was removed. If that is the decision and direction you go with the City Treasurer, then we would recommend that, and City Treasurer be stricken from this portion. And then there's the, always the oddballs. We found that, for some reason, it requires that people tell the treasurer that they've sold their dogs. Microchipping addresses that is more appropriately handled by animal services, and so we are recommending that that section also be removed. So at this point, what we really need from you is to determine how you want to go forward with appointing, whether it's by the City Council or the City Manager. We have something kinda pretty much in place, should you go with the City Manager, that's what, as we said, we do with the City Clerk position. If the council wishes to retain that appointing authority, we will need more direction. How do we do that? What kind of application? Staff is happy to bring forth something, but there will be another step, and a little more work involved in identifying exactly how you would execute that authority. We would also like direction on the sections of code that I just went over, whether you, depending on which direction you take, which sections, and what wording you prefer. And once we have that, we would bring those changes back to you to begin the process of revising the ordinances.
Any questions of our City Clerk?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is it possible to do some kind of combination of the two, in terms of who appoints? Is it possible to say, for example, appointed by the City Manager upon approval by the City Council?
Councilmember Peterson.
I'm gonna punt to the table with the JD over there.
So I think that if there was a two-step process, it would be something along the lines of the City Manager would nominate, and the City Council would ultimately appoint, but the City Manager would nominate. I think that would probably be, if we wanted to identify a two-step process, that would be the way to do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, are there any questions for the public?
Mayor Bertrand, City Council members. First of all, as the former treasurer, I had no dog ownership applications, so if you wanna put the Chief of Police on that, I'll be happy to support. I endorse the proposal that the City Manager appoint the treasurer. I would assume that he would appoint the Finance Director, and that would eliminate redundant bureaucrat, which I think is a very popular notion. But it also reduces costs associated with the benefits that the City Treasurer has to incur, and their communications with the treasurer, his training, his or her training, and potential salary savings. So I think in general, it is a good idea, from a cost-saving standpoint and a bureaucratic reduction standpoint, to have the City Manager make the appointment, and I'm assuming he will make the City Treasurer, I mean, the Finance Director. But there's one consideration that I wanted to bring up that is missing in this approach, and that is the loss of a citizen review of the city invoices. Now, that's something that I enjoy doing, and I know that Mayor had enjoyed doing when he was the treasurer. And I think that could easily be remedied by just empowering the Financial Advisory Committee to appoint someone to sign off on the city invoices, that would improve that committee's insight into the way the government runs and their influence, and it gets a fresh set of eyes, an independent set of eyes, on those invoices. So that's the one thing, I think, that might be missing from the notion of an appointed treasurer, but I think it can be easily remedied. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments more from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to the City Council for discussion. Sam?
Peter, I'm glad you mentioned the Finance Advisory Committee, because I guess I'm thinking that, number one, I would like to hear from them about how the treasurer should be appointed, and by whom the treasurer should be appointed. It would seem that, I mean, we have this body, I think we should utilize them, get their input. I understand the interest in streamlining, but I don't know where fiscal matters are concerned, seems better procedure for financial controls to have multiple eyes looking over your ledgers. So in that spirit, I would like to hear from the Finance Advisory Committee. I would be interested in maybe having them appoint or select who the treasurer would be. Maybe it could be the Chair of the Finance Advisory Committee, as long as, you know, they operated under the, kind of the, representation to the community, there would be an experienced and capable person in that role. So those are my thoughts and recommendations.
Peterson?
Yeah, I think it is important that we hear from the Finance Advisory Committee, but I also have faith in our City Manager. I bring up the potential for a two-part process, only because I have heard from citizens who are concerned about there being less involvement by the City Council, or less oversight by citizens in general. I don't necessarily share that concern, but I do feel that it's my responsibility to bring it forward as something that I have heard from citizens. So that's really my only comment right now, is that I think it's worth at least considering having a two-part process that involves both the City Council and the City Manager.
So I would agree with what Kristen is saying. I recently asked our council here about, well, what would that look like if we didn't agree with the appointment made by City Manager? What are the next steps, and how could we get out of that? And so I have some similar concerns of kind of losing, City Council not having so much say in who would be appointed. So I'd be interested in looking at a two-step process as well, and I agree that the Finance Committee should have some sort of input, and I think that piece is missing. So yeah, I think that, that's it.
Ed?
Yeah, I wanna go back in time a little bit, 'cause it's, what we did here was, we took a lot of time to put this on the ballot, to, the idea was, we were trying to streamline government, okay? And we had a lot of discussion, and I appreciate all the efforts of our former treasurer, Peter Wilk, because he came on and took this job for two years, and his task was to, you know, to come up with a reason why we needed to have an elected treasurer, and he said, you don't need to have one. And I appreciate those comments, 'cause I think they were sincere, from having done the job for two years. And I'm here trying to find a way to streamline government. I see every other city in this county that does the same exact process. I mean, we had a, what's the word I wanna use? Very dynamic City Clerk here before, that started the process, that it shouldn't be elected City Clerk, it should be one appointed by the City Manager. And that has become a successful system, and that's what I think we're doing here with the treasurer. We're recognizing that the person that does all the work, that assumes all the responsibility, is our Finance Director. And this is just consistent with, at least, I think it's up to 60% of the cities in the state, that now run their operations that way. I'm not worried about oversight, because two of the people on the City Council sit on the Finance Committee, and we have an Oversight Committee, the Finance Committee. So the oversight's being done, but, you know, I am willing to incorporate some of the good suggestions made by the treasurer, that, you know, if we have invoices, that we could have, there's some way that they make a recommendation about how they look at invoices. But I don't think, I think it's our job to run the city, it's not, the Finance Committee is an advisory committee that advises us. They advise us throughout the year on budget expenditures, and we make the ultimate decision. So what I'm here tonight to do is to, you know, give the City Manager direction, and what I've heard is, is Councilmember Peterson brought up, that a two-part system. And I don't have any problem with putting a second step into the process of the City Manager, is that he makes the appointment, and then he recommends to us, and it comes, yes, at a formal meeting, and we can either approve it or deny it, and that way, we still have ultimate control. So that totally makes sense to me, and it's just another step in his process that I don't think is gonna mess up how we do things. So at this point, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we, a motion, that we have, the Finance, that the City Manager makes an appointment. You had four questions here, Linda, I'm gonna try to address these. City Manager makes the appointment, whether you want us to say, with the inclusion that the Finance Director as treasurer, subject to council approval. That, I think that's what was come there. Delete the language for "City Treasurer" in all the places you had, and delete anything to do with dogs, and add, you know, this is where I would take the input from the Finance Committee, is that direct them, that they come up with a recommendation on how they would like to review invoices. And as long as we have some way that is included, that they're looked at, I don't need to determine that, I don't think the City Manager needs to determine that, and I think it could come from a recommendation from them on how to look at those invoices, so that's my motion.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and second. I'll make a few comments. Thank you, Peter, for talking about this issue, and reminding me about the review of the invoices, I have to admit. So if City Council does go this way, I think the Finance Advisory would have to come up with some method, obviously. First of all, Finance Advisory doesn't meet on a regular basis, we had to review it every week, right? And so that's quite a task. Every week, you and I had to review all the invoices, and sometimes, especially if you don't know what's going on, it takes a while to get used to them, but it was very instructive. So I think that's been incorporated, what Ed said, I totally agree with that. And I'd like to call a question, unless there's any more comments. No more comments? Please call a question.
Councilmember Story?
No.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Bottorff?
Aye.
Mayor Bertrand?
Aye.
Passes for one.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item D, Community Block Grant, CBD application. So we need to hold a public hearing and defer consideration of the attached resolution. So is there a presentation on this?
Yes, we have a short presentation. The item before you right now is consideration of making a application for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant program. Just to give us some background, in 2017, the city did make a CDBG application. We applied for three items. One was a $250,000 grant for a housing rehabilitation program, another $250,000 for our Home Buyer Assistance Program, and then a $1.9 million application for Claire Street Traffic Calming Project. Unfortunately, for various reasons under each item, all these three of these applications were unsuccessful and not funded. CDBG recently issued a second round, or their next round, of applications, and at this time, we're seeking council's opinion, action to whether we should apply or not. It does require two public hearings be held. The first one doesn't have to be before the council, and the Community Development Director and I held that public hearing previously, and nobody attended. Pretty typical for this type of project, or grant application. So right now, we can consider the items that we approved in 2017, and both the Community Development Director and I are gonna talk about them really quickly. So the Claire Street project, we are not recommending that we reapply for that funding. The CDBG program for public improvement projects is really geared toward assisting at-need communities with water, or sewer, or direct health-related issues, and funding those type of projects. 100% of their projects that were funded in 2017 were either water or sewer projects. We're talking, we're, you know, sewer systems are broken, sewage is bubbling to the street, or water's unwrinkable, they're under cease and desist orders from the state, and there's enough of them out there that they use up all their funding on that. We were told going in that getting a street improvement project approved is difficult, and it proved that. What it is, is they evaluate it on a needs basis, and we got half the points, I think it was out of 250 points, we got 125 points from that, and just that right there is enough to, was enough to keep us from getting funded. There are some other items in their scoring sheet that we didn't get 100% on, but we, which are correctable, but I just think, it's our opinion that it's very unlikely that we would be successful with another grant program. If we did wanna move forward with it, it's about $5,000 to have an application prepared. So regarding the housing grants, I'll now pass it off to Katie here.
Okay, so the housing grants, originally, I drafted the report to say that we wanted to move forward with a recommendation to move forward for the housing grants. I learned after our first public outreach meeting that the Housing Authority no longer wants to participate in the housing rehabilitation program. In talking with Mark Fowler of the Housing Authority, he said it was very staff-intensive. They have to get bids for upgrades for home improvements, and it's typically within the mobile homes, and there's a requirement for three bids. There's only one local contractor that participated the last round, and they don't have the staff with the timing that was, the demand that was placed on the Housing Authority. It was a great program, although labor-intensive for our partner. So at this point, I'd recommend, I think the grant applications, they're gonna open up new ones this summer. I'd like to first identify who our new partner is going to be before, if you're awarded a grant and you don't carry it out, then the next round of grant reviews, we wouldn't rank high, because we didn't spend the money in the last round. So right now, we're of good standing, we spent all the money in the last go-around, and the two projects coupled together, the Home Buyer's Assistance Project, that's typically, it's hard, in the last go-around, we qualified one property- we qualified one property owner for the, that grant, but we could, there was flexibility in the spending that any money we didn't use in that program could be utilized towards the rehabilitation program. So we did utilize both, the whole half a million dollars, but I really want to make sure we have our partner in place before we move forward, because I'd hate to get allocated the money and not have the, the means in which to carry it through to our, um, residents. So therefore, I'll, you'll probably see me this summer, coming back once the grants open again, and hopefully I have someone in, in place. And I, and I've reached out to our, um, to people within the region, and have gotten some good feedback of, on leads of who our next partners could be. So we're working on it, and hopefully we'll have something in place. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? How hard is it to find a partner? Because I've, my own knowledge base here is that there's a whole series of contractors that specialize in mobile homes, for instance, and, uh, that's their customer base. So I'm just curious about why we couldn't find a partner last time, and what's going on?
Uh, it's interesting. We actually, I had an inquiry from another jurisdiction today, asking, um, how they got people to respond to the, how we got people to respond to our RFP in the first go, when we initially went through this, when Rich put out the RFP. We sent out 15 RFPs to different housing groups, and only one responded to our RFP, so we ended up doing a sole, um, and it is, um, in, in sending out emails to other jurisdictions on trying to make a fix for this, the one comment I've heard back is, "This is very staff-intensive," and, um, like, the county of Santa Cruz dropped their rehab program because of that, and they moved it into a different program that's not funded under CBDG, but is funded under the home program. So just, I'm, I'm learning of, uh, we're not the first one to get this feedback. And the amount that's, the administrative amount that's given to the, um, housing implementer is a set percentage, and they often put a lot of work into these, but the amount that they're receiving from the grant money just doesn't add up to the amount of work put into the program, so.
I, uh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, um, comment from the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think one point that's worth noting is, is a lot of these grants, the housing rehab are, they involve relatively small dollar figures. It could be a $10,000 renovation to someone's bathroom to make it ADA accessible, um, those kinds of things, which are very important for people, make a difference in people's lives. They're not an efficient way to spend grant funding. And so that's one of the challenges, is that it's a great program for our community, but in terms of efficiency of staff time and effort to coordinate between, you know, individual property owners, to income certify them, to qualify the contractor, to facilitate the construction, it's, it's hard. So that's the challenge, just to give you a flavor for kind of what the project program looks like.
Any questions of those staff? Ed?
Um, so the item we're voting on today as an action item, I, I'm seeing that there's two, kind of two separate CBD grant, excuse me, applications? Is that what we're looking at? But we're voting on it as one item, is that correct?
Correct. Three, essentially, with the Claire's Street.
The Claire's, and then?
Right, so it would be one application that comes from the city. You would have to adopt one resolution tonight if you wanted to apply for one of those. But there's three distinct items that we would be applying, could, could be applying for.
Okay. Um, I do have some further questions about the Claire's Street, um, options if we didn't move forward, and I just don't know if that's a good time to talk about that now. Yeah? Um, so if we would, if we did not move forward with, um, the CDBG application process, I would be interested in, um, looking into other options for, um, fixing the roads on Claire's and dealing with the traffic issues. One of the things that I saw on the campaign trail was a lot of folks talking about how it's really dangerous, and cars are speeding down, um, the road, and that'd be something I would really be interested in prioritizing, um, if we didn't move forward with this grant. I understand that it would take a lot of, you know, $5,000 is a lot of money to waste, but, um, but maybe not. And how many points do you say we missed it by? Like 120?
We missed it by about 170, but the 125 we lost on the needs assessment was enough right there to keep us out.
Right, right, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
May, may I have a follow-up question? Steve, how much of the Claire's Street project is actually funded?
Right now, I don't think there's any funding in there. There's maybe $10,000, less than $10,000 in there. You know, this, to give you all a little history, this project was originally conceived back when we were talking about a hotel at the Rissman Project. And it was, its construction was a condition of that project. Um, and then it was, when that hotel project went away, it was funded under the RDA, then the RDA went away and took the funding away from it. So it's been on the books for a while, and, um, it's a difficult one. Um, we did have some funding put aside for it, and then the county notified us that they were putting a sewer project in, so we kind of delayed it. Um, right now, it's, it's unfunded, and, and clearly, um, the city's priorities and available funding is going to be a stretch to try and find funding quickly for this project.
All right, thank you. Okay, with this, um, I'd like to concur. I've, I've known someone that's fixed the roof of a mobile home, and it totally made a difference in their life. Um, visited the mobile home, and it was night and day from leaky roof. At this point, I'd like to open to public comments on this issue. Seeing none, bring it back to the city council for a motion or discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm extremely sensitive to Claire's, and, and Steve, you, you kind of developed that, that process very well. Claire's has been a sad, sad story for all of us. I know I've met with a couple homeowners over there, we all have, and we all recognize the improvements there. I, I'm just not willing to, to, you know, frivolously throw away $5,000 when our chances are not very good of getting that. Um, the only thing I can offer, and this is the same thing I look at you, is, and this is going to be a tough decision for the council, is we have, you know, funding from Measure D for roads, but we've pretty much got that calculated on 19 other projects throughout the city. So I don't think there's a miracle cure for Claire's, other than the fact that we all know that it needs it, but just the, the, the dollar amount of it is just what makes it so overwhelming. And the last time we had money like that was when we were spending Mesureau money for four years in a row. We had a million-plus dollars, and that money just isn't available to us these days. So with that, I'm going to make a motion for staff recommendation to, I think it's not to apply on any of it this time, so that's my motion.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, Katie, the future, uh, the grants that are going to come up in the summer, will those, any of those be available for street repairs, or it's always the same housing? Would, would there, would there be more or different types of grants available in the summertime?
Um, my understanding would be the CBDG grants that we could apply for.
Just the same?
Yes.
Okay, the same types?
Yep.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floors, or a second?
Second.
Uh, second, by Kristin. So any more discussion, Sam?
Um, no, I, I, I support the motion. I was thinking maybe we should take the $5,000 that we just saved and put it into the Claire's project, but it's a drop in the bucket, I know, but, you know, maybe it's something moving in that direction, so.
So, um, Kristin, you, you made the second. Do you have any comments? Okay.
So I, I had some thoughts, and I think I shared them with you, Steve. Um, so we had initial design or concept for Claire's. Is there a way to do things, to revision it and accomplish some of the same things in terms of traffic calming? Um, one thing I noted in our discussion is that, um, I think when this project first came up, there was a lot of vacant spaces on the streets. Um, people just did not need that parking space at all. Now, it's, it's, it's quite crowded. I, I think, um, a lot of the, um, units that border on Claire's and Wharf, um, are now not just single families, but the families and their kids who also have cars, and, you know, there's a big need for, for people, uh, to have places to park their cars. Um, that's just part of it. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's a way we could relook at this project, not now, I'm not putting it into motion, but to say that maybe there's other ways to accomplish some of the same things without what we thought was quite a bit of money from the RDA, for instance.
Certainly, we can revision the project. Um, I think there's some items we could come up with. I mean, the, the key elements or important elements are slowing traffic down and providing safe pedestrian crossings.
Right.
And those kind of come together, because slow cars down, you narrow the road to make pedestrian crossings safer, you narrow the, you shorten the crossing, so the two tie together. There's, you know, potential to look at options to put in maybe something, uh, smaller in scale or, or simpler in design at the intersections of 46 and 47, and 42nd and Claire's, which is where we want to have the two pedestrian crossings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the big items that's driving up the cost now is that the road really needs to be repaved.
Mm.
Um, so if we continue to defer that and, and, but maybe concentrate on some of the, uh, some pedestrian and, and traffic calming, we may be able to do something. And it'd be something we could, you know, talk about when we're putting the next year's budget and CIP program together.
Okay. So Claire's was not considered in terms of the repaving that you envision for the whole city?
Well, the grant application included repaving the entire street. I'm just saying, we could potentially continue on trying to maintain it as it is and do other small-scale improvements. To repave it is, is probably a million dollars just by itself.
Just, okay. So what Ed said about monies from D, um, these aren't going to get to this?
Well, yeah, the council in the past has identified, has adopted a Measure D program for allocating the, a five-year program. Uh, Claire Street was unidentified. Doesn't mean we can't come back next year and, and change that and put Claire Street on it and take something that's, it's not cast in stone. What's cast in stone is the projects we've awarded already. So Measure D is paid for the Surisio project we've already completed.
Right.
Right now, this year's funding is going toward the Brummer Street, uh, project, which is underway as far as design and outreach. Beyond that, um, I think next year is, um, funding for paving at 46th, 42nd, and Diamond Area.
Diamond Area is tragically.
Yeah. Which is in just as much need of paving as anywhere else. So, um, those are the ones I can remember off the top of my head where Measure D is allocated, there's, but we have allocated, like I said. We can come back, amend that, put Claire's in there, but there's no immediate funding available from that.
Okay.
And that's only $300,000 here, just so we identify the value of it.
Well, maybe it's good to have a second look, because if it's true that the road is suffering quite a bit, then it's a major, you know, area, so we really, really do have to identify money to make that. Okay. So there's a second and, uh, motion, so?
Roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Bottorff?
Aye.
And Mayor Bertrand?
Aye.
Thank you, council. So on to item E, uh, options to streamline the meeting agenda, and there will be a staff report from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think as it was pointed out by a member of the public, that it is a little bit ironic that at the end of the night, we're talking about streamlining the agenda. But nevertheless, um, at our last council meeting, we had a conversation about what time the city council wanted to set as a regular meeting time. Um, it was noted that with the seven o'clock start, it becomes eight o'clock relatively quickly, and nine o'clock, which can potentially dissuade some members of the public from participating. And so, um, when we looked at the meeting time, we decided to stick with the seven o'clock meeting time, but the council directed me to work with the mayor to identify some mechanisms by which we could potentially get to the hearing portion of the agenda, which is usually why people will come to a public meeting, uh, more quickly. Um, so what we did was, uh, the mayor and I went through the agenda, and we took a look at some different opportunities and kind of highlighted some places we thought potentially the council could take a look at. And the reason why this is back on the agenda with the council is, is that at the end of the day, this is the city council's meeting. And I think really it's paramount, it's really important that everybody acknowledges what's in the agenda, that it's the right language, that you all agree to it, and it's what you charge your mayor with, with, um, enforcing and managing, too. Um, so this was included in the packet. This is the, just a quick snapshot of a sample agenda, and what we did was in yellow, we highlighted some of the existing language, which is either practice that can help sometimes move meetings along, um, that we may or may not be implementing today as a common practice. And then in green, we highlighted potentially some new language that could be added to our standard agenda format. The first was suggestions that the actual agenda be published that says that presentations are limited to eight minutes. Eight minutes is what we always tell a presenter whenever they're interacting with staff about how much time they have to make their presentation. But I'll be honest, it's very common that the presentations go on for longer, significantly longer than eight minutes, um, particularly when they're not managed by city staff. So that is one opportunity to potentially identify a time limit actually in the agenda for the presentations, rather than just a verbal conversation with the presenter offline. Uh, secondarily, we talk in the, in the agenda about a maximum of 30 minutes for oral communications. I'll be honest with you, I can't think of very many times in my tenure here with the city where we have had more than 30 minutes of oral communications at the beginning of the agenda, um, but we just need to keep our eye on that when we do have a lot of public comment on off-agenda items, and potentially look at limiting the public comment from three minutes down to two minutes, just to keep that portion of the meeting moving. The next item we identified as a potential new item would be that we, there'd be a cap on the comments section at the beginning of the meeting. Um, you know, it's one of these funny things where individual council members or staff can make comments, and individually, no one talks for that long, but cumulatively, if we all talk for five minutes before we get to the agenda, we've just burned through 40 minutes. Um, so one option would be that we identify in the agenda that the individual comments are intended to be two minutes or less. And then lastly, and this is a practice that we haven't followed very well, I would, um, recently, is, is, um, that when we pull items off consent, that particularly when they're pulled by council members, that we just agree that we'll defer those to the end of the evening, um, and not delay the start of the public hearing process. Again, that's been part of our language in the agenda, and often we feel, I think, when, when they do get pulled, that we can quickly address it and move on, but invariably, it does. Um, it can be a death by a thousand cuts sometimes with this issue, where it's a lot of little things that end up cumulatively pushing back the start of our public meetings. So these are the suggestions. Um, staff is available for questions or comments, and input from the council.
Thanks, city manager. Any questions of the city manager?
A question.
Sam?
Jamie, on the matter of the, uh, council treasurer, well, we don't have a, well, we'll see if we have a treasurer, um, but, uh, and staff comments, uh, any reason those can't be moved to the end of the, our, uh, evening instead of up front?
Councilmember Story, so, you know, interestingly, about four years ago, I was working with the mayor, I don't remember who the mayor was at that time, we actually tried moving that to the end of the night. Um, but council members often have announcements that are sort of quick-hitting items that they would like to put out there to the public when everybody is tuned in. And so we ended up with a council announcements at the beginning of the meeting, and then council comments at the end of the evening, and we ended up frankly just double-doing it. Um, and at that point, the mayor and I, I don't remember who the mayor was at that point, but at that point, we gave it a shot for four or five meetings, and it was like, okay, that didn't work until we went back to it. So there's no reason we couldn't move them to the end of the night, but I do think that there often is the desire by the council members and staff, for that matter, to, you know, announce the groundbreaking for the new library, for example, when, when everybody is tuned in. The trick is just keeping it to, um...
I understand.
Yeah.
I, I remember that. It did seem to lengthen things out quite a bit, yeah. Did not work. Any other questions of staff? At this point, any questions from the public? Okay, your comments are over, now let's go back to...
Just quickly, it just occurs to me that why can't you move the public comments to the end?
Yes.
Well, the unagenda is the public comments.
Yes, please respond.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so that is, is an option to change the time of the public comments. It is an option that's within the law, however, I think the optics of it in the community may not, um, it may be challenged optically.
Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, any other?
I also agree with your comment earlier that that is often not the, the problem. That, that's not adding length to the agenda either.
I thought I saw a hand raised. Yeah, please come to the lectern.
I just wanted to double-check. You were talking about setting the meeting to six o'clock versus seven o'clock? That's what this would?
We've decided that one.
And that's already been decided?
Yes.
Okay.
But to clarify, it wasn't decided to move it to six.
We did not move it.
We did not move it to six.
We did not move it to six. We had that discussion, but not...
The special meeting was going to be at six, okay?
Oh, okay.
It's a one-time, when we have a special meeting, one time only, it's at six, and that was decided, but we were going to move our normal meetings, we did not do that.
Yeah, that was last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So, any more comments from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to the city council for discussion and direction.
I personally liked all the suggestions that were made. I think that sometimes our presentations do get carried away, so I would have no problem limiting that, and I think that, I think, you know, it's just a little bit of responsibility of us, you know, if we have something we need to say, I know we can, I think we can all get what we need to say in two minutes. I think that that's a reasonable amount of time to advertise, you know, if I want to talk about the car show, or, you know, the Easter egg hunt, or anything, I think two minutes is a lot of time for us to talk. So, I think, I think everything that was mentioned, the city manager mentioned, I'm fine with. I do think, as the city clerk said, I don't think we have a problem here with public comments to the point where I feel that moving it to the end of the meeting, I think sometimes people come here and they just want to say what's on their mind and then go home. So, it would be counterproductive to tell them, you have to wait till the end of the meeting to hear your public comments. So, I think mostly it would just might fall on us a little bit how we move things along. The comments made about the consent calendar were good, so that's all I got.
You bet.
I have nothing. I, can I make the motion?
Sure.
The motion to, let me find the agenda item, what's the title, to consider options to streamline the meeting agenda.
Okay, as presented by staff, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Kristin, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. I like everything that's in the recommendations, thus the reason I seconded the motion. It's also mentioned in here on direction if the lighted timer should be used for our comments, our two-minute comments, correct? Or was it just for the eight-minute presentation?
Staff was actually suggesting for the eight-minute presentation, I think getting in the business of putting the timer on council members. I'm certainly open to it if the council would like us to. It's at your discretion. We were asking a question about the presentations more explicitly.
Oh, okay. Is that, can I make a friendly amendment to include that in your motion?
To put the council on timers?
No, the presentations, sorry, eight-minute presentations.
Okay.
Can I make a friendly amendment to your motion for that? Yes, that's...
Yes.
Okay, Sam, you're on a timer right now, so...
Okay, I guess I better talk fast.
Please.
Well, one, I guess I'm a little unclear what the problem is, or what the issue is, and what we're trying to accomplish, but if it is getting to the public comments portions of our meeting and the public hearing in our meeting, there may be a few other things that we could do. I mean, number one, we spend a little bit of time with a roll call, and I've always wondered why we do that, maybe it's required, but it seems like that, you know, Linda could just recognize that the council are present and reflect that in a minute. We're televised, everybody who's in the room can see us. I'm not sure what the purpose of that is. And so, there's a certain formality value, but maybe we could look at that.
May I, I know there are other jurisdictions that do their roll call actually before closed session, when there is closed session, and that also may...
Yeah, well, I mean, that sounds like an excellent option. We could just, you know, maybe breeze through that, just with the pledge of allegiance. And on the other one, and when we get to the public hearings, I mean, it is also a matter of trying to move through those in an efficient manner, but also granting everyone an opportunity to speak. I mean, and in my profession, it's always good to know what the other side has to say, so you can kind of focus and narrow the issues. And I was just going to suggest, well, maybe we should start with a public comments on the public hearing before we even have the staff presentation, so that we can hear what the public's issues are. That may, and if there are none, that may allow us to just speed through the staff explanation. We can not have council questions, and we can just get right to, you know, either the action at the time. And also, and, you know, those discreet steps, staff explanation, council questions, public comment, council deliberation and decision, those are, those to me can take up quite a bit of time and aren't necessary for every particular issue, and maybe the mayor could focus and try to streamline those, and maybe in certain situations, council could forego their questions, and the council deliberation and decision, I mean, it should be one step and/or, because we could just get right to the decision and not have two discreet steps. So, I think those are just some thoughts about moving through the public hearing as quickly as possible, so we don't lose people like Peter in the middle of the meetings, and so, no, I didn't mean to draw attention to you, Peter, but, and I think those are, those are my thoughts, but I'm happy to support the motion as it stands.
Okay, thank you for those thoughts. I do have a comment. I always wanted to get a presentation of the, of the presentations ahead of time, so I had a sense of what they were, I could think about them, you know, instead of just being thrown at it for the first time. So, I don't know if that's possible to, you know, if XYZ agency came to us and they're presenting something about their program, I'd kind of like to get that presentation ahead of time. I don't know if that's possible, might help on the questions that we'd have, so that might move things forward, just a suggestion. But I'm for the motion, and I think by unanimous consent, we're all for this?
I want to make one more, one more comment.
I'm sorry.
Sam, I appreciate your comments, and I think they're good. I especially like the thing about the roll call, I don't know why we do it, and if we don't have to do it, then we shouldn't have to do it. If we can do it at closed session, I mean, if we just sometimes take away 30 seconds at a time, it'll seem, prior to coming here, we were, seemed like we weren't getting to the public agenda till like eight o'clock, and it just seems like we were trying to figure, why, how can we do this? And the other thing I just wanted to add was, you know, sometimes there's questions that we have that can be fielded to the city manager prior to coming to the council meeting, and I strongly suggest, you know, I mean, some things, you know, I don't necessarily want to do, I don't know if the public would be able to do their comments before hearing the staff presentation, because sometimes the idea is the presentation will stimulate a question, and that's, you know, what I think it is. But if you, if I have questions that I know about the topic that aren't clear in the packet, you know, the phone call to either Steve or, you know, can clear that up. So, if we all just take the initiative to do that, I think we all have the ability to streamline it, but I think the motion itself will at least make us focus on it, so.
Yes, thank you. Listening to council people's comments, I was pretty aware that there was a lot of questions of staff beforehand, I was pretty aware of that, so that probably helped. Okay, I know you did, that's for sure. Okay, so, are we all in agreement to pass this?
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote.
Oh, you want to call for a vote, okay, I was trying to get around...
You just say all in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, there you go. You know, the new city mayor will be better at this next time, how's that?
Good.
So, we are now going to the redevelopment agency.
Do we need to adjourn this meeting first?
Yes, you're right. This meeting adjourned, and we are now going to the City Capital as a successor agency to the former City Capital Redevelopment Agency. Well, let's forego the roll call because we're still here. Are there any additional materials to the...
None.
None, okay. Public comments to the redevelopment agency, successor agency meeting? I don't see any. Any staff comments, city council comments? No, I don't see any. Okay, we have a consent agenda here. Is there a motion to approve the, oh, excuse me, are there any items that people want to remove from the consent agenda? None. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. General government hearings, we now need to consider the approval of the ROPS, excuse me, the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule for July 1, 2019. Recommendation is to approve the recognized obligation. Is there a report on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will keep it relatively brief, and if any council member has any questions or wants any more detail, I'm happy to answer now or offline, but this is the, at this point, an annual process to basically approve the list for payment of former redevelopment agency obligations. The list originally was much larger, it's now been, most of those obligations have been paid off, and what we're down to is the Housing Rental Assistance Program, the Castle Mobile Home Millennium Project, and then our administrative allowance. Those are the three projects that we're requesting funding for. Out of this ROPS, it'd be $145,000 total. With that, I would, I'm available for questions.
Any questions of city manager? Seeing none? Oh, one question, sorry.
I just want to clarify, you've mentioned three, but I see five.
Councilmember, Councilwoman Brooks, so the three projects that I think we're asking for funding on is the Housing, the Housing Authority Program that we administer in the former rent control parks.
Yep.
$100,000 for the Castle Mobile Home Project, which was an acquisition partnership with a nonprofit that we managed.
And renovation.
And then our $30,000 for the administrative allowance to sort of manage the redevelopment agency. There's a couple other, the Rispin-Perry Park project is still listed as an obligation, but we're not requesting a draw on it at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I had one. Jamie, on the payment register, under status, the three of the items are just identified as open, I just, what does that mean?
So, I actually talked with Mark Sullivan quite a bit about this today. The Rispin-Perry Park, for example, we listed it with a zero obligation, but it's still listed there. And, you know, with that, there's a long story around that project, and it had to do with making ADA repairs to the park due to a lawsuit, and the redevelopment agency owned the property at the time, so it was a jointly-funded project. Not all the work has been done, and it's going to get completed with the Rispin Project, and so even though we think it's fully paid out, we're still continuing to list it to kind of keep that door open.
Okay, just not finalized items then, and...
Because once it's gone, it's gone, and you can't get it back on the ROPS.
Right, okay, thank you.
No more questions, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, any comments from the public on this? My, sorry. Okay, there's a second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did we have a motion?
Any opposition?
Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a second.
Okay, my apologies.
Sorry, okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any approve, disapprove? None, okay, so passes, by zero. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
A little bit.
We'll get back to it.